Christine, are you ready? Not technically 5:30, it's 5:29. That clock says it is. 5:29 currently. Okay, now it's 5:30. Good evening, everyone. I am Mayor Shelley Carlson. The Morehead City Council welcomes public input on issues listed on the agenda or of general community interest, time and council permitting. Speakers are limited to three minutes each. If you would like to address the council during the meeting, please fill out a form provided by the city clerk and we will call you up during citizens addressing the council. If comments were submitted to the clerk prior to the meeting via email or phone, those comments will be entered into record. For more information on participation, please visit the council meetings page on the City of Morehead website at cityofmorehead.com. We, the Morehead City Council, collectively and with gratitude acknowledge the sacred land the City of Morehead is built upon. We acknowledge the people who have resided here for generations and recognize that the spirit of the Dakota, Ojibwe, Métis, and all Indigenous communities permeate this land. And for the July 25, 2022 Morehead City Council meeting, could I get a roll call, please? Shelley Dahlquist?
Here.
Matt Gilbertson? Laura Karun?
Here.
Heather Niesemeyer?
Here.
Deb White?
Here.
Larry Selgevold?
Here.
Steve Lindas?
Here.
Chuck Hendrickson?
Here.
And Mayor Shelley Carlson? Here, and if you could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And City Manager Molly, is there any agenda amendments?
There are no amendments tonight, Mayor.
Okay. Moving on to recognitions and presentations, we do not have any today, so moving on to the consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Deb White, so moved. Second, Niesemeyer. So White, motion, Niesemeyer second. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda passes. And looking for a motion to approve the meeting minutes from July 11, 2022?
So moved.
Second. White. Selgevold motioned, White second. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes pass. Moving on to number seven, citizens addressing the council, are there any members in the audience who wish to address the council? Again, just making sure there's nobody in the audience who wishes to address the council? Seeing none, moving on to Economic Development, number 10. And I will turn the resolution to Business Development Public Infrastructure Grant, I will turn that over to Mr. LaPointe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. More of a feel-good kind of story here tonight. This is a really great collaborative effort. I really want to give thanks to Amy Thorpe, our Economic Development Program Administrator in Engineering Department, and many others that kind of work behind the scenes on this. But we had approached the Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development, DED, a number of months ago about a request to expand our infrastructure in the Makara Industrial Park, specifically at 34th Avenue going eastward. This would add about eight lots to our industrial park, already within our certified shovel-ready site that we worked with DED on a number of years back. At that time, there wasn't any money really in that fund that existed in DED, so we weren't really sure what was going to happen or what was going to come available. I think because of our readiness and the amount of lots that we have been selling in the industrial park, truly only having a couple lots left within the railroad kind of area, we got a call from the state immediately after they got funding saying that they would award us $2 million, which is the most that can be awarded per this BDPI grant. And truly, the Business Development and Public Infrastructure BDPI program is defined to really stimulate economic development activity by assisting local units of government to provide infrastructure. There is some stipulations to the use of the funds, and truthfully, the only really requirement there is, is that these are sold to eligible industrial users, they cannot be retail users. That's their one stipulation that happens across the state when they do award these grants, which based on what we've been seeing and the demand that we've been getting from our real estate professional that we work with and the inquiries that we're getting, we're seeing heavy industrial activity and inquiries that we're receiving as well. So if accepted here tonight, we have engineering already kind of working on some design, but we would have the award acceptance tonight, summer 2022, we'd have complete design work, the fall of 2022, we'd have underground infrastructure installed, and the spring and summer of '23, the actual installation of 34th Avenue South. There is a matching requirement, this grant, as I mentioned, is the most you can receive from Minnesota DED of $2 million. That $2 million goes to the overall project cost. Engineering did provide a table within your packet that just kind of outlined some estimated funds, so we are getting a tremendous value of this grant to be able to provide the infrastructure to give ourselves eight more lots. That can be flexible, I will just say they're eight two-acre lots right now, but they could be consolidated for bigger users to accommodate our future needs. So it's, again, a very exciting, I think, opportunity for us here in Morehead. I think it's showing the value that we have growth here, and our state partnership is seeing that value to invest in us to continue our efforts. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Any questions or comments from the council? Councilmember White.
Thank you, Mayor, just a comment, just to really reiterate what a great thing this is, and just thinking back a few years ago, for a while, where things were pretty slow in terms of properties being acquired in the industrial park, and to see things heating up this way in Makara, and now we're expanding. But I just wanted to emphasize, too, that this isn't, it's good for our industry, but it's also good for residents in Morehead, because as we expand that commercial tax base, that takes off the pressure on residential properties, too. So all around, it's a really good testament to the growth that we're seeing in Morehead. And so, yes, thank you to you, Derek, and to Amy, and all the folks that we're working on, and we appreciate the state making such a large investment, too.
Thank you. And I should mention, too, I mean, this announcement, I think, also solidifies future growth for the park from existing buildings. We had one up for auction here a little while ago, and a large company acquired that building and is going to put some major investment into it as well. So I think the fact that people are seeing the growth is also bringing more individuals as well, so I think it'll only help our businesses that are out there as well.
Any other questions or comments from the council? All right, seeing none.
So move approval.
White seconds. Okay, I have a motion to accept the Business Development Public Infrastructure Grant. Steve Lindas motioned, White second. Any further questions or comments? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. LaPointe, and immense thanks to Amy Thorpe, because I know she was really involved in writing that grant. I know when Commissioner Grove called, he was really excited to let Morehead know about it, because it was the maximum amount that they were able to give of this grant, and after having actually been here, he was really excited for our community to receive this. And I invited him back to come to see how it ends up. We'll see. Right. Moving on to number 16A, and I will turn this over to Director Iverson.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and council. Item 15A is a proposed resolution to approve a partnership contract between Mindott Clay County and the City of Morehead for project out at the Joint Use Facility. It's to replace the salt shed, which is the big tent structure you can see from Interstate on the northeast corner of the campus out there. It's been there since 2000, and that tent fabric structure has a typical lifespan of 15 to 20 years, 22 years old. So in 2019, we started planning ahead to replace it this year, and this agreement is kind of the culmination of that. It's been bid, there's three contractors involved in that bid total. You see, Roars is the primary, doing the tent structure and the new trusses. Hanson Silo is doing the divider bunkers, splitting the footprint of the tent into thirds, city, county, and state. Then finally, Two Rivers Contracting is doing some of the basic removals and some concrete work after the divider panels are set. So it's a pretty straightforward agreement, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Iverson. Any questions or comments for Director Iverson? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the partnership contract. So move, Niesemeyer?
Second.
Niesemeyer motioned, Hendrickson second. Are any further questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Iverson. All right, we are moving on to mayor and council reports. Any council member have reports to provide to us tonight? Councilmember Hendrickson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of things here, I did attend the Life Carry United Foundation Community Partner Day, which was a big success, there's 200 attendees there, and I got to give out prizes, and I had to give out two bikes. Sad thing is, if you give out two bikes to kids, the other kids want them bad, so they look kind of sad. But we had other prizes and donated food and that, so it was really a good day. Second thing, I just want to congratulate the Morehead Blues on making it to the state tournament, and I do have a personal interest in my nephew plays for them. But I wanted to bring up, too, the shape of Matson Field, we might have to take a look at that right now, because the audience was packed, but really no place for those people to sit, or the spectators to sit, so I think we might have to revisit and just make some plans for Matson Field, because it's got character, it's a good ball field, and I think we can shape it up a little bit, so. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Hendrickson. Councilmember Lindas?
Thank you, Mayor Carlson. So I was gone for the last meeting, because I was at a work-related conference in Washington, DC, and I extended on personal time so that I could visit our representatives in Washington, DC. So I had a chance to meet with Megan Plots, who is a legislative assistant for Representative Michelle Fishbach, and we had a nice talk about education, and she was really impressed with the Morehead Career Academy, so good job, Morehead Spuds. But we also had an opportunity to talk a little bit about an 11th Street underpass and about ways that Representative Fishbach could support that enterprise. I also visited with Pete Wykoff, who's a senior policy advisor for Senator Tina Smith. We talked a little about the climate, and he was very impressed with our climate resolution that we passed last January. But we also had an opportunity to talk about the 11th Street underpass also. So taking opportunities to try to make sure people understand all the positive benefits for that project is really important. But I am sorry that I missed the grand opening for the other underpass, so I'm going to be walking back and forth, having my own little party.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Lindas. Councilmember White?
Thank you, Mayor. It's been a busy couple weeks. So last week, I attended the West Central Initiative Economic Development District Board Meeting, and one of the presenters was from Mindott, and they gave us some information about the statewide electric vehicle infrastructure plan. And so if you're not familiar with that, that's the states, they're working at investing in putting in the infrastructure for EVs primarily in the I-35 and I-94 corridor, and so really making it more feasible for people to have both their own electric cars, as well as commercial vehicles and ag ones. And of course, we're a little bit ahead of the game, too, because we already have a Level 3 fast charge station right here in Morehead. I wanted to remind people that Pride Week, FM Pride Week is coming up, and on August 13th, we will have two events that I wanted to highlight. One is the only Pride Week event that will be happening here in Morehead, and that's a 5K that will be taking place at 8:30 in the morning, and it'll start from the Morehead Center Mall parking ramp, and it's a part of a fundraiser for all of the FM Pride activities during the year. And also, they're still looking for folks from the Human Rights Commission, but also from council, if you can volunteer at Pride in the Park later that day, then I think let Christina know, or we have a new staff member. Actually, Christina, could you just maybe later, or actually, maybe Dan will put in his report who our new staff member is. So, yes. And then the Indigenous Community Picnic, as a reminder, that's August 20th, and it would be great to have our council members there. I wanted to thank Morehead Police, the Boys and Girls Club, and Affinity for putting on a great community picnic in Queens Park, and it was a little bit rainy, but not too rainy that the pizza didn't get too soggy, and the kids had a great time. They also were giving out bikes, or excuse me, bike helmets, and tuning up bikes, and had lots of games and great activities. And I know they have another one coming up on August 16th, and it will be in Ramke Park. So if you didn't get a chance to come to this one, try to come to the next one. This weekend was also the 40th anniversary of the Yom Komst Voyage and the ribbon cutting here for the gallery for Viking, for the Yom Komst, so the ship gallery, and that was a great event, huge turnout, and it was neat to have the crew back, including one of them from Norway who came over for a panel discussion. And then lastly, I just wanted to, I'm sure other people are going to mention it, too, that Night to Unite is coming up next week, so great opportunity to get out there in our communities. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember White. Councilmember Karun?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I just want to say it's very exciting to be able to drive under that underpass. I went through there three times today only, so it's very convenient to have that open. And it was really exciting to be a part of the ribbon cutting last week as well. Also, I'm part of the Yes 56560 Committee. Couple of things I want you to check out if you haven't yet, we have a website that's beautiful, yes56560.com. We also have a Facebook page, and you can check out both of those places if you are looking to get involved, because now is the time that we're going to start needing people to share testimonials on why you think that we should do this project, donate to the campaign, and volunteer for one of the many events that we will be participating in this late summer and early fall. So check it out.
Councilmember Niesemeyer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, too, want to say that I thoroughly enjoy the underpass on 20th and 21st being open. I also want a shout out to the Ward 2 community members and businesses who had to live through some stress and strain over the last four years during this construction. It is something that our entire community and surrounding communities will benefit from, and it has been a long time coming, and it's been a lot of strenuous times for some families and businesses, and I just want to say we acknowledge that and appreciate what you've had to go through over the last couple of years. But it is fabulous seeing it open, and I mean, fresh concrete just looks so great in the morning as I drive through. I also wanted to acknowledge Night to Unite, August 2nd is just next week, it's going to be a fabulous night, so please, put some chairs out, I know that we're all going to be out walking through neighborhoods, save me some fabulous snacks, because I'll be there with bells on. Also, Ramke Park, Councilmember White mentioned it, it's 5 to 8 August 16th, and the Morehead Police and the Boys and Girls Clubs are putting that together, and everybody is welcome to come out and have snacks, get their bikes fixed, and have some prizes. I think it's pretty good that they do giveaways and do some community building. I look forward to seeing people there. The Historical Society had a wonderful grand opening, and I have to say that I was sort of like awestruck by being able to meet crew members who were on the Yom Komst, and I had like a shirt signed, right? Because they had an autograph station, which was so cool, so cool. And so I really appreciate the Historical and Cultural Society of Clay County for putting that wonderful event together this Sunday, but also know that it is open and accessible for our community and those surrounding the area to access. And so I wanted to shout that out and appreciate all of the work that went in for those staff, and to see so many people enjoying that this weekend was really pretty great.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Niesemeyer. Anyone else? All right, I don't have a lot of reports. Not going to go through the underpass, because I think that everybody has mentioned that already, but just a quick shout out to some of the people who really made, the behind-the-scenes folks who made it happen, which Zoe Johnson, Jamie Berglin, Lisa Bodie, Mark Dickerson, and then Ruth, and I don't recall Ruth's last name, works in engineering, she's awesome. And then also, a non-city staff person, or a non-city, yeah, non-city staff person, Bill Bartholomew, who really stepped up to really help the city do a phenomenal celebration of this underpass. Also, side note, he received the Minnesota State Transportation Center of Excellence 2022 Transportation Program Supporter of the Year, and he's going to be formally recognized and honored for that because of all the work and the training he does at M State in the automotive department. He's also the individual who puts on our Cruise Night, and is trying very hard, very diligently, and I think he is almost there to surpass the number of cars and the number of people that come to Morehead Cruise Night in comparison to West Fargo. So a huge shout out, and if you guys go to Cruise Night, I would encourage you to thank him as well. The only other thing that I have to report is, on Friday, I was able to attend the 175th anniversary of the Day of Independence for Liberia. They had a celebration at the Dilworth Community Center, which was decorated in a manner that I've never seen it before. I've been there a number of times. They had a wonderful meal and really celebrated their Independence Day with all the different flags of their counties, which, my understanding, it was similar to what our states would be, but they had all of them displayed, and Mayor Dardus was gowned, which is a very high honor in the Liberian culture, and so congratulations to Mayor Dardus. That is all I have, and I'll turn it over to you, City Manager Molly.
Thank you, Mayor. So our new Community Development Program Administrator is Tanya Kunza. She would have started a week and a half ago or so, and we'll be sure to bring her here and offer a proper introduction. She is replacing Joshua Huffman, who recently moved to Tennessee with his family, and he's been just, it's, we've got a strong relationship there and very helpful in helping Tanya into that new role. So we'll be sure to bring her to a meeting, so that you can, everyone can meet her. Last week, the City of Morehead and Resilient Morehead hosted a significant planting event to install a number of plants into the stormwater pond at South Side Regional Park. The entire project comprises, what is it, five acres? Turns five, will turn five acres of turf grass into natural prairie, and that all helps with water filtration and erosion issues and pollinator habitat. It's aesthetically pleasing out at the park, and so it was really neat. So over 30 folks helped do the planting, and we're thankful to all of them and the folks at Resilient Morehead and our Public Works Department, Crystal and Steve, that helped make that happen. It's neat to see these things happening more regularly, and the pictures that come through of the folks that are working on this stuff together in their neighborhoods and really taking care of the public places that are there. We've talked about it a couple times, but the commemoration of the Yom Komst, 40th anniversary of the voyage, you know, took place here. There's a new look in the ship gallery that we invite everybody to take a look at, and the celebration on Saturday was really pretty special. It was very inspiring, frankly, to see again, and many of the new crew members were here, families and all the folks, so the place was packed, and I'm glad I came. And so, we mentioned Night to Unite, so that's next Tuesday, August 2nd. Many neighborhood groups, block clubs, and others are registering with Leigh Anne Wallen. So we'll share, a lot of those come in kind of, I wouldn't say last minute, but later, it was like, well, last minute, they come in. So we'll be sharing that with you, so that you could see in your ward and other places all the events that are happening. This, you know, the City of Morehead really comes alive that night. I believe last year there were, boy, it was over, close to 70, 60 to 70 parties happening citywide. So we'll be shooting information to you, and then some reports from, information from department heads, too, in case anybody brings up any information. Also, some contact information where you could direct people to the appropriate staff if there are specific questions about anything that's happening operationally in the city. So it's a great, great opportunity to engage. And then finally, just want to mention that information about filing for candidacy, candidate seat on the city council is now on the city's website at cityofmorehead.com. So if you, it's going to be on the spotlight, but then it'll also, if you click on that governance tab, there's all the information about election, and just can't help but take the opportunity to say how thankful we are to all who step up to run for election and everyone that offers their time to serve on local boards and commissions. Yeah, we wouldn't be able to do our work without it, so thank you.
All right, thank you, City Manager Molly. One thing I did forget to mention, if you Google CBS News with Jane Polly, Library of the 21st Century, there's about a seven-minute little YouTube video that talks about what a library of the 21st century looks like, and I've gotten a lot of feedback from people that watched it and said they finally got what we're trying to do with a new community center library in Morehead. It really encapsulizes what we are trying to create, and so I would encourage everybody to just give five, seven minutes of your time to watch this, and get more information as we roll out the vision and the plan for the new community center library. What was that again, Mayor? It's on YouTube, CBS with Jane Polly. Thank you. I think it's just called Library of the 21st Century. Yes 56560 Facebook page. Yes, or you could go to the Yes 56560 website and click on that. With that, we do have an executive session tonight, so looking for a motion to approve going into the, can't talk tonight, executive session pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 13D.04 for labor negotiations. So move, Niesemeyer?
Dasel, second.
Niesemeyer motioned, Lindas second, and we are now in executive session. So, now I am looking for a resolution to approve the labor agreement and memorandum of understanding between the City of Morehead and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees.
So, move Neesmeyer.
Lindas, second.
Neesmeyer motion, Karun, second. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, the resolution passes. Is there any new business?
There is no new business, Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Dolquest.
Yes, I would like to bring up some new business. Just yesterday, I'm going to take my mask off here. There was a report on NPR. Monarch butterflies have been declared endangered, and it occurred on Friday that the International Union for Conservation of Nature added the migratory monarch butterfly to the endangered species list. They interviewed Karen Oberhauser, conservation biologist who researches monarch butterfly populations and migratory patterns, and she was a part of the team that made that assessment. She is at University of Wisconsin in Madison. She directs the arboretum at the University of Wisconsin-Madison and founder and director of Monarch Lava Monitoring Project. And two of the things that she mentions is that what's important to do is to have the, like, the pollinator gardens. The caterpillars only eat milkweed. And the other thing that she mentions is that we need to stop using pesticides and insecticides because it doesn't only just kill the monarch butterflies, but it also kills other pollinators. I think we've seen a lot of the climate emergency recently with Europe having extreme temperatures and pretty much everywhere in the U.S. having extreme temperatures except for us lately. It's been beautiful here. And so, I would like to propose that we stop spraying mosquitoes and we stop spraying weeds in our parks. What the, what the herbicides do has killed the food for a lot of these pollinators. And of course, during the mosquito spraying, aerial spraying, we saw what happened, that it killed the monarchs. And it's not just the monarchs, there's other pollinators. And because of this extreme climate emergency, I would like us to stop spraying in Morehead, both the aerial mosquito spraying and spraying for weeds in our parks. So, can I propose it? And ask for a vote?
So, I'm looking at City Attorney Shockley, because the few things that are running through my mind right now is that we do have contracts that are already been signed and we already have been committed to those things. I think that this would be an excellent topic for discussion at a workshop. Probably it wouldn't be an appropriate time to make an motion right now since there is been no discussion beyond just this information right now, and we already have those contracts in place.
The contracts, we had already discussed that we do have the option to not spray. So, where a contract is, we pay them for that contract, but we can opt out of spraying. Same with, we don't have a contract for spraying in the parks, we just buy the equipment and we hire the staff to do it. So, the contracts are already there. There's not, it's not going to be breaking any contracts. What I'm saying is with our options that we had is to stop spraying, that we stop spraying. This will affect future generations. It's happening right now. Our, our food supply is dwindling. We are not able to produce without pollinators. There's just no way. And if we are killing the pollinators, we can do this. There are many Minnesota cities that have stopped spraying, both chemicals, both for the herbicides and the pollinator, the mosquito spray. So, I would like to vote tonight to stop spraying because this is a climate emergency, and we will not have food. We could make Morehead an oasis.
I'm just looking at City Attorney Shockley to maybe address the contractual component of this question.
Well, thank you, Mayor. So, I'll, I'll address the contract issue first and then the motion issue second. Haven't had a chance to look at what contracts are out there, what are the provisions for cancellation or not spraying. This is the first, kind of first blush at the issue. Also, don't know what the extent of the declaration of being placed on the endangered species list is. I'm familiar with the federal rules regarding that, that may impact how herbicides are applied. There's just a whole, a whole bunch of different regulations and items that are involved in that. So, I, I don't, don't know specifically. I defer to tech staff, Public Works on those issues, and then probably need some time just to figure out what's allowed, what's not, to brief the council in the same way would be with the contracts. To the motion issue, a council member can make a motion to take action under new business. So, he'd need a second and vote on it. It could be tabled just like any other motion also.
I just, I'm afraid that we are so close to having a potential spraying that I want to do this preemptive before it happens.
Oh, Councilmember White.
I, I don't, I definitely understand your sense of urgency, and you and I have talked about it a little bit, too, and I, and I agree, and it was, you know, and I think we, we definitely, these are things that we need to, we can't just bury our heads in the sand, you know. I don't know that I would be ready, I would not feel comfortable taking action tonight, but I do think, I wouldn't, perhaps that we could spend a little time, for one, just reviewing again our current, like, just discussing for a minute our current policy in terms of aerial spraying, because my understanding is that we would only do it if there is evidence of a public health, of a, of a, of a strong public health risk, in which case then we do have to make a balance, you know, if there, if we're putting, if there was a clear evidence of a public health risk, we do have a responsibility to do that. And so, that's where, if, just to be able to do good decision-making, I wouldn't want to just do it in this last, you know, few minutes of a meeting. But I don't, I don't, I want to just recognize that, that the, I completely agree with you with the importance of this issue. I just don't know that that's something that we could, for good decision-making processes, I just wouldn't feel comfortable having us act on that tonight without really having a longer discussion and, and really bringing in some more information and reviewing our current, current policies and the work that we are doing to try to make changes, because I feel like we're moving in a direction, and I, I wouldn't want to do something that would jeopardize the direction that we're heading, that might, you know, actually set us off course. I could be persuaded otherwise, but I just, that's how, I just want to say that's how I'm feeling, you know. And I don't want to diminish the importance of what's happening, and I've been thinking about it, too, as I, as I see us getting into the, the peak time for monarch, you know, traveling through our area, and we're seeing the mosquito count going up, and maybe that's where I think having a little discussion about where we're at right now with our policy, I, I would be very comfortable with that.
Thank you, Councilmember White. Councilmember Saldivo.
Just procedurally, we have a motion, but there hasn't been a second, has there?
No.
Then you don't, there is no discussion.
I have not experienced yet a motion with no second yet, so, City Attorney Shockley, if you could help me out here.
If there's no second, the motion dies, and, you know, I defer to Dan if there's any additional staff action or anything.
Can I alter my motion to do a temporary until we have information, but that there would no be, be no spraying until we get your legal advice? A temporary stop until then?
The chair can take motions and ask for seconds, that's, that's up to the, the mayor.
Okay, so, if I can alter it to that, a temporary stop until we get the legal information, that we do not have any spraying? That'll be my proposal.
Could I ask a clarification?
Councilmember Lindas.
So, what I would be very comfortable with doing is exactly what Attorney Shockley has brought up, that in light of the declaration that the monarchs are an endangered species, that could have ramifications for, you know, anyone that we're contracting with, and that we would then be liable if we do something that could, you know, essentially, there, there's legal implications. And so, I think it's very appropriate to ask for a report from staff how we're basically, you know, following the, the new guidelines that are going to be coming out. I think that there's a lot of consideration that does need to be played into. I understand your urgency. I think that this is something that we shouldn't just assume that staff is thinking about, they have a lot of things on their, on their minds. And so, I would hope that, you know, Cass County Vector Control is, is already incorporating this in, but that doesn't mean that we can't ask them for a specific ask them for a specific, you know, feedback for how they're, how they're addressing this.
So Councilmember Dolquest, your second motion did not get a second either. I think that maybe at this point, just with the few comments that I've heard, it might be best to have City Manager Molly maybe visit with Cass County Vector Control, City Attorney Shockley, Public Works Director, and then obviously our Sustainability Coordinator as well, to just gather more feedback, more information, both the legal side of things, operational side of things, and then we can come back at a later date and, and have a further discussion. It can be really challenging when new things are brought under new business, when staff and our city attorney doesn't have time to adequately prepare information and to try to come up with comments and thoughts and ideas and making decisions in a moment's notice when they have the ramifications of stopping some things.
I understand that, but this came out Friday.
Yep, I understand that.
So I did want to bring it to the attention of the rest of the council. This is something, and like Councilmember Lindas has said, that, you know, if it isn't an endangered species, we need to be taking a serious look at what we are doing.
Thank you for bringing that forth. So is that, City Manager Molly?
Yes, happy to initiate that research right away.
Thank you.
All right, with that, it is 6:21, and the city council meeting is adjourned for the night.